Okay.
Okay, I'd love to call this meeting the first time town council to order for member twenty fifth. That's a test wine for this prayer and definitely a little bit.
All right, my father, we're grateful tonight with the opportunity to serve your people. We're grateful for the life that we pour into our life, the life that we get to live here, the basic life that we get to live here in the mountains. And we're grateful for your son, Jesus, our power and strength to us and God as close to you. Help us this evening as we deliberate and plan and make decisions for our community, help us to make God our decisions and help us to make decisions that will help this community grow and flourish in Jesus' name. In the name.
Attention, salute, pledge.
Our question is to define the United States of America and through the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On our agenda tonight, we've got to add one thing to what we improve. We've got to add to the resolution that she has in her packet to accept the donation from our friends at Oak Island. The resolution is in your packet, but we need to add that to the agenda of the day.
I think we should not we add that to our agenda.
Okay. Motion, okay.
Say it again.
Call a vote.
Also, in your packet, have minutes from our president.
I'm going to go to the quickie, the ministry.
Good. Motion on laying them safe where they're at. All right. Have you done any for other stations in that? And do we have any backside over top?
We did, Josh.
Josh, good. Not in top there, Josh.
We're real quick. I was honored last week to be reinstated as our chief. We'll wait next year, within nine years. In those nine years, I'm planning an effort to keep a positive relationship with you all the time. And because you can continue to do that. I don't, it doesn't mean I always see that I will always bury you, but we do want professional and respectful places. It's not safe. In the end of the year, two years, and I had a long year in session, almost nine years discussion about something, but we don't professional and respectful. December the sixteenth is our Christmas party. This year is a little different. It will be at the fire department because the first one of the shirts is still being used. So we'll have it at the fire department. That's an invitation to all of you on the board. Everybody said a third morning, six thirty on the sixteenth, third Monday. I want to thank Darlene for our relationship. You took over from Richard, playing a good relationship with Richard, you work with Richard, and we've been inside.
Thank you.
Sure, we're taking that. Do our best to try to continue to get a great relationship. Or in the process of looking down there.
From outside perspective, we are technically part of the town or not. So I don't have to worry about what I say or do. She can be fired. So that gives you an outside perspective.
Can you turn the risk to your board to run down?
I try, but if we have especially considered test moments. Appreciate the support that we got from you all.
And I appreciate all the fire department that has worked with the community. Thank you, thank you.
I told you, I was a reflection of everybody down. When this happened, they did what they needed to do when I stayed over here, pointed this way and pointed that way, and they did. We had some good members, some good leadership. Yeah, we made mistakes and constantly made a difference. I don't plan to, nobody expected, I know, I made a mistake. Then not before, we'd have the county meetings coming back and building with me. We'd run around, I saw another four, this was a problem area, this was a problem area, this may be. No, I made a mistake saying that I don't think it'll be as bad as before. I think we placed it for about nine feet more. So looking forward with you all and the county. Working, I think, I guess I've inherited the title of fire association president for the meantime. And so there's also stuff there. But one of the things I want to work with the town and the county is a little more plain and practice and preparedness, even if it's just a snowstorm. The county is, I mean, English plate is talking, lose power for a better too, it's not a big deal. Didn't think nothing about it. We lose power for three weeks, two to three weeks, it wasn't an issue. Situation we have, that can easily be another two or three day power outage with snow. One last thing, and it's indirectly directly involves the town. County's working on, and the town's working on debris removal with the trees and everything, which is great. But we've got, unfortunately, areas in the town city limits that trees are down, and will be down, and will never be cleaned up on private property, just like the ridge here or anything, the bypass. All those trees are down, but it'll never be cleaned up because there's no economic or reason to. Now, next spring and next fall, fire season is going to happen.
Yeah.
The fuel load, the fuel load on the ground, even in the city limits, and definitely in cities, just like right there in the Mexico bypass, so far, we're starting there. Houses will probably reach with the trees and this fall, this spring, so that's going to be an issue. I don't know the answer, there's not an answer. Talking to state officials, and they're all within it, and they're all them saying it, they know it.
Yeah.
If it's private property, it's off the right away, you know, it won't let anybody clean it up. Trees down.
Yeah.
So that's, hopefully, won't be an issue about spirits.
Yeah, that may be our next big thing is that fear.
And that's typically, that is, will retain unfortunately, when you have a large timber one guy, you can have expectation of some serious issues.
A lot of fuel for fire plus not being able to get access.
Access, yes, access to anything. Mitchell County does not have a county ranger, Yancey County does not have a county ranger, Al County does not have a county ranger. So that's something that the fire association, we don't know where else, after the first year with the state, probably won't have to be the best. That's who I go to get resources in, someone has, it's on who to call, who to go to on our area, who they are county ranger, who they have. The space we didn't have to figure out, how to rectify that problem one way or the other.
I saw USDA has a disaster assistance, emergency forest restoration program that is for private individuals. So that's something.
If, if they're willing to do it, like, there's like the spark that's down this ridge, there's no advantage for me to clean it up. It's not in the lanes, off the bank. I mean, yeah, if they, if they want to, there's lots of stuff out there, a lot of places that there's no, and then the ridge running up to the water. All those trees are, plus the reason to clean them up, if really you might be down it, you know, it's not blocking any access.
And the downtown probably not, there'll be about a lot of things.
After six, eight months, it's, it's, the center of it's kind of black, and it's not worth lawyers and timber to clean it up. Well, that's, we'll figure out something to the best way to do it.
The disaster committee. Thank you, Josh. We certainly appreciate all you can get into the fire department, I was down here quite a bit the first couple of weeks after this. I, I see a lot being done. Your guys really, really pulling in their work. A lot of comments, what went down with that parking park.
Like I said, I'm a reflection of the membership.
Yeah. All righty, we'll move on. Thank you, John. Under discussion items, there were put here, we need to have some talk about interview questions for our potential dates of interview for our town manager application. Chad could probably tell you more about this while we're doing it. Or maybe Darlene, but I think it's fact, we need to be pretty consistent on our questions between every interview, every person we interview.
I think it gives you an opportunity to focus what's important in the interview. And having those questions ahead of time, that Chad take a look at and make sure they're all legally acceptable questions. You know, there, there are areas that you don't want to go in interviews, and he can advise you on that. And again, making sure that everybody gets the same opportunity to answer questions as the other applicants. Would you narrow it down to who we want to interview?
Yeah, it can be very tricky sometimes. To tell Darlene about the case, I was involved once where a organization was interviewing someone, and they, the only person over fifty, they did, they asked the question about, are you good with computers? They didn't ask that question to anyone under, any younger applicants. That person was turned out for the job, she sued her, they had experimentation, the plant. The implication was that she was old and didn't know what she'd do when it comes to technology and so forth. So it's, sometimes we have to be very careful about the questions you ask, and you have to ask questions to all the candidates. Now, there may be some scenarios where there are certain questions to ask certain candidates. So generally, you want to have thought about your question well in advance. Probably divvy them up amongst the council members, and all of you ask, make sure that you ask the same course of questions. And then there could be areas that you go off on because, you know, someone might have a lot of zoning experience, and so you want to investigate that more. Someone may have, you know, other experiences, so you want to, but in the same core kind of questions, you want to make sure that everyone's asked. And they need obviously to be thorough and thought out in advance, so you're not kind of coming off the fly.
Yeah. I hear by somebody, whoever we interview, we tell them, oh, they want to come to Spruce Pine, why they want to seek this job. And that's pretty well, I was like, here, everybody is asking that question, but I'm getting there.
I mean, things you might consider are, you know, what is the person's management style? How would they identify their philosophy of leading an organization? Have they ever led an organization where they were responsible for employees? How do they motivate employees? If, you know, they, employees need to be motivated, what is their strategy in doing that? With their experience with zoning, with ordinance graphing, with public records laws, with public meetings. So if you, the whole kind of, you know, there's, there's some kind of basic questions to ask someone for this type of job. But there are also more kind of in-depth questions to ask when you're interviewing someone for a leadership position. And if you'd like, I'd be happy to provide you, I tend to town manager questions, and that, I've happened to run a few searches for some school boards before. I'd be happy to provide you some questions, and then you all can think about that, look at them, or you can come up with your own. But that's something that kind of you want to think about. And then, then you also want to think a little bit more about what the process is going forward to. I mean, how are you going to, how many applicants are you going to whittle down from that pool? And then when you have those applicants, what do you, are you going to have just me with them? Are you going to have a committee which involves other stakeholders also, meeting them, and community members, business members, other kind of stakeholders also to give opinions? Unfortunately, the time is drawing pretty near, and, you know, it's going to be quick. Are there people, or do you want them to, I mean, if they're out of town, would you like them to come here and spend a day at the town, meet all the department heads? And have a luncheon with the Rotary Club or, or business leaders or something to, to see, you know, I mean, that's, those are all acceptable sort of things to do in this type of, of search. It just happened, I think you probably want to define the process a little bit more, however you want to do it, and then have some dates and some deadlines as to when you want to get things accomplished. I mean, you know, are you going to have your applicants, at least if you get down to three or five applicants, probably need to have a criminal background check on those applicants. You've got to make sure they have proper paperwork to do that. You probably want to have a credit check for those applicants. Have to make sure you have the proper paperwork for that. I think if this person is the chief executive officer over the budget. And if they declare personal bankruptcy several times, that might be a factory you want now. It may not be one that changes your opinion, but it might do something you want to know. So that's, you know, I, I think you just need, the council needs to decide a little bit more as to how it wants to proceed with this. And, and then, I'm certainly here to help, however you need me to help.
As a board, would you like to give us, and then on questions, some extra questions?
I definitely would, yes.
Definitely, definitely matter.
And we can come up with somewhere around, between us, we can, there, if we don't have thirty questions.
Yeah, also, I'd also like to, to get back on the experience of the current manager. I don't think anybody in the room probably knows as much about what it's going to take as Darlene does. And so it would be great, it would be great to have your input on the type of person and the type of skills that we need to be looking for as well. If you could put something together like that, I would be very grateful.
Chad, can you elaborate on the committee?
Yeah, I mean.
How common is that?
It's pretty common, I think Darlene served on a committee, right? Well, maybe I'm not supposed to share that. So another town in the region, for instance, is selecting a town manager in the larger region of western Carolina. And they're having a citizen slash other town members doing kind of Zoom questions, and if I'm, is that correct?
That is correct.
Kind of serving on a, on a committee that then makes recommendation, of course, all of it's non-binding recommendations, it's not of one entity that gets to decide, who is the town council? Or who is the town manager, it's you. But it's not necessarily unusual to, because there are various stakeholders in town that have different interests. And, you know, this board may not, while you represent every, the town Spruce Pine, there are other people that might shed some light on what they want to see in a town manager. And inform you all about that. So, I mean, that's, it's sort of not inappropriate to do it, and if that's something that you want to do, it would just, you'd have to have some thoughts. Who serves on these committees, this committee, and what, what they do, and at what level do you want to bring them up? If you choose to use someone like that, and what, and how do they provide the input to you? You all don't have a search committee or a search kind of team that's doing it, so the logistics, because I don't know who's going to be doing this for me. Because the logistics might become a little problematic, but, I mean, it's something that you can't figure out. And so who, you know, who is the point person to set up Zoom meetings and so forth. But it's not inappropriate at all, and typically happens. And if, if not even at the committee level, then just having the opportunity for a larger group of people to meet the candidates in some sort of forum. So that town council members can get input from people outside of the five people sitting here. All that's.
If a town manager hired, the town Darlene leaves, can we function that way for a while?
Well, I mean, you'd really need to have an interim. I mean, someone is, has to be in, in that position. And so, I mean, that could be, I mean, obviously, you could have someone internally do it. Or you could hire someone from the outside in a temporary position, if, if no more than part time. But, I mean, I, you know, someone has to be in that, that role to, at least someone has to be designated as the acting town manager. It may be that you decide internally if there's a candidate. I don't know that you have the, the manpower internally, someone to take on that extra, those extra responsibilities, but.
With all that's going on with this disaster and thing and all this, we're, we're stressed.
Right.
All these people are doing more than their job description now.
Yeah, so you may, you may seek outside, someone on a temporary outside basis. If, I mean, and of course, that's, that takes time to get in place, so if that's something you're looking at, you're going to ask.
Well, if, if we're going to go through all these steps, well, this year, I don't see if it's going to be possible, as a manager hired, that Darlene leaves, not being that thing.
So we've essentially got three weeks. Okay, if we take out Thanksgiving and all that. I would, I would love to have citizens be back on what they're looking for in some way. And to know that if we go on like the social media polling route, we're going to get a bunch of loud mouths, pardon my language. But a, a lot of loud voices that are on the, on the fringes and activist sides.
Well, I think we have.
I would love for somebody to have a voice though.
They've got some business owners that would like to have.
Right. And so some form of a forum where they can have a voice, I would like to know what the constituents are looking for on it. I tend to be future oriented, and so I'm looking at, personally, I'm looking at the credentials of the person in the next three or four years as we rebuild. I think that's pretty important. There's a different skill set for a pioneer or an initial builder than a person who maintains. And a lot of people live in the, in the business world in particular. And so I care, I care a bit more about what happens in the next four or five years in terms of rebuilding personally. But I understand that not everybody has that viewpoint. And so I'd love to hear, I'd love to hear feedback personally. But I, I agree with the mayor, we don't have, to stay in and make that happen at any year is, would be a hurdle. And probably almost feels to me like we'd be taking attention away from maybe a few more like that situations if we, if we do that with people inside, on the inside.
We can start in the mayor's pool before we got to a forum or.
Excellent.
Yeah, and that can be done, I mean, the council can decide how it wants to do that, I mean, that, that's a closed session topic. You can all review the applications, come up with rank choice, you want three, you want five, I mean, I don't have any people, I don't even think it's closed yet on that service. So, I mean, you, you can kind of decide how you want that done, and you know, come back at a meeting and share your rankings and discuss that, and then decide, whittle it down to a more, you know, a more manageable number.
But may I ask you this, Chad, would it be possible that even though the applications are not, deadline is not met, that we could set a meeting after the deadlines pass? Can we set that meeting today or Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, next week or something?
When, when is it closed?
Friday, no, Wednesday.
Two days from now?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, oh, yeah.
As long as we get forty-eight hour, that'd be super great. That's very special, call me.
Yeah, and it'll be a closed session, I mean, and it will be, sorry, we've got a closed session, so, I mean, that's. And so what's the purpose of that meeting?
To discuss the applicants, to the applicants, and then decide whether or not, and sort of. Give you a chance to come back with your questions about that. And our own questions. Would everybody be willing to make next month again? Does that need to be timed on, does that need to be scheduled for the holidays to get that number?
As long as. Yeah, as long as we post it tomorrow.
I mean, ju- just so you guys know, if it's easier, there's all, I, I will already be over here on Tuesday, there's a planning board meeting at, at two o'clock. I mean, a meeting already at two o'clock, uh, the planning board. Tuesday gives you a little extra leeway in terms of advertising. I mean, I, I can certainly make a meeting on with, on this, I can make a meeting on Monday afternoon. Or Tuesday afternoon, again, I'm, I'm here already on Tuesday.
Jeff, Rob, Wayne. I'm retired.
I can, I can do it a day.
My Monday night is open, like, two, you know, you can be out here by six fifteen.
I'd probably be in the same situation. Monday would be better for me.
And I can, I can provide questions, I mean, again, I can come over, I don't have a problem coming to the meeting. And provide questions in advance, and then you all can, over the Thanksgiving holiday, can do your homework.
Yeah.
And so the meeting doesn't necessarily have to be a, a long one, or it may be a long one. But if you all have commonalities among the people you're choosing, it may not necessarily be a long meeting. So that, obviously, your prep work, coming to it.
Well, I don't want to do it on Monday, I'll be here, and if it takes more than an hour, then I'll be here an hour and a half or whatever. If Monday's the main or not, then this, this week, or Monday.
And you'll say, what time? I can put you in. Are we ready to begin or are we?
I'm going to stay here one more time.
Five thirty?
Between now and then, I know it's holiday. Just how many of you were married now too? No, you didn't have an idea of that.
We, we, you can figure out more between now and then. Yeah. Why don't you just kind of review them and kind of rank your, rank them?
Yeah.
And then you can come together and decide, maybe you can't decide on three, maybe you need to decide on four. I mean, again, I don't have any plot, but you, and there may be more. So that might be the easiest way to do it is just kind of rank them in the best way you can and then you can decide on the meeting I want to. Okay.
We've got a boot coming from the NCA to go from there. Maybe it'll get here.
Maybe it'll get here in the middle of the day. So Monday, bathroom. And also not to belabor the point, but you may also think about the alternative as to if you do not have someone in place, what you're going to
Offered by the NC Department of Environmental Quality. We have that resolution in front of you. Elaborate on that.
This is a resolution that's required as part of the pageant work for that loan. And then you all gave me permission to apply for that loan. And this is resolving that the town does hereby accept the emergency, state emergency bridge loan offer of $3 million. That the town of Sprucebine does hereby give assurance to the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality that any conditions or assurances contained in the award offer will be adhered to. That Darlene Butler, town manager and successor subtitle, is hereby offer us and directed to furnish such information as the appropriate state agency may request in connection to such application project. And as you know, that's $3 million. It's a no interest loan and we can use it, not use it.
But if we did your own loan, we have to start with the bank.
We do.
And because it's a loan, it has no impact on FEMA. It does not.
And what's the payment schedule like on the loan?
That's a Crystal question I do not know.
Now, is this, this for the walking bridge?
This is not for the walking bridge. This is for our insurance.
It's for our insurance. It exists.
Um, to repair a wastewater and hydrating water system. This gives us upfront money that we can use for these emergency repairs. And then once you're ready, you could use FEMA reimbursement to start paying that loan back.
Well, we need to vote on that resolution initially.
We need to vote on that.
I have a motion here, sir.
I have a motion for rocking.
I said, English.
I have a motion for rocking, setting my lane all through. Somebody else will sign. All right. The next thing is the one we add to our agenda, the resolution accepting donation to the town of Sprucebine from Banding Together. Let's just talk to town of Oak Island called this fundraiser. Gorge, you want to go over it, son?
I will. On Friday, the mayor, council member and police chief traveled here from Oak Island and had a ceremonial check presented that was $30,000. And actually the checks add up from their fundraiser to $30,005.4. They had already hired to that, brought a vehicle, trailer, door supplies. And they, they just did it for our town from their town. And it was, it was great. So the, the resolution just accepts those funds. Says whereas on November third, 2024, the town of Oak Island, North Carolina hosted Banding Together, a four band concert to benefit the town and its citizens, businesses and communities following the devastation from Hurricane Helene. Whereas the event organizers raised and delivered to the town $30,005.54 in various financial donations and collected a 26-foot box truck of native supplies to be used by the town to benefit the citizens, businesses and communities impacted by Hurricane Helene. And whereas the town council, on behalf of the town and its citizens, businesses and communities are deeply appreciative for the event, the financial donations and supplies and extends a heartfelt thank you for the event and to its organizers, participants and donors. In this spirit of thanksgiving, the town of Oak Island and its residents and citizens went above and beyond to help their fellow North Carolinians in a time of great need. Now therefore being resolved by the town council that on behalf of the town, the council hereby formally accepts the financial donations and supplies from the event. The council in a public meeting will consider and determine the best and most impactful uses for the financial donations to benefit the citizens, businesses and communities impacted by Hurricane Helene. And three, at a future duly called public meeting with a quorum established, the council shall vote to amend the 24, 25 budget ordinance to add the financial donations as unrestricted revenue and appropriate the same to specific departments, functions and or projects to carry out the council's stated desires and purposes. And you would need to vote and we hope to be read and unanimously approved this 25th day of November 2024.
All right. I'll take a motion on a second. I approve this as which? I don't look anybody. Do I have a motion?
Yes.
Ben, you got one?
Yes.
Second? Second or off? All right. I vote on this. All right. Unanimous. I write a date for you. Decide how we spend the money. All right. Your report, we got it.
I'm fairly sure some of you know from, from being here, we are meeting weekly with FEMA representatives, Mondays at 10 o'clock. So far, the meetings have largely been about giving them an idea of our damages and our challenges and talking about the paperwork, the documentation that's necessary. Crystal is doing an excellent job. I don't think that's a surprise to anybody. She's, she's very capable and we're very fortunate to have her. This past Friday, I met with Withershey and now about the stormwater asset inventory in High Country Council of Governments. You know, we had done most of the G I S mapping for the stormwater system. The cog is going to take a look at some of the heavily affected areas during storms, see if their G I S mapping is still pertinent to those areas. And they, they think from what they've seen that it is. So once that decision is made, then Withershey and now can move forward with the assessment of the lines that have been identified through G I S and what needs to happen in terms of future improvements to our state. Seems like it's about midday to talk about that with Withershey and now and see where we're going on water and sewer. The maps for sewer have been an ongoing thing and those folks have been here a lot here lately since the storm. The grant kickoff for the E D A water line, you know, that those funds along with Golden Leaf funds are the water line that extends from basically across from Town Hall to McDonald's. That project is still, the engineering is pretty much done for that. And these E D A funds will help us move forward with the construction. So that's kind of been pushed to the side while we're trying to get things established. But that's in the grant with the deadline and still a needed line. So we'll be moving forward with that. I'll give you a quick update on water and wastewater. This is from the end of last week. All water customers except for one have water restored and that one on Beaver Creek that I believe the crew was working on today, they were back after, or actually, no, that'll be after the Thanksgiving holiday. I'm not sure. There was a crew working there, so we hope they got that single one back on. Last Tuesday, we pulled samples, water samples from multiple areas. They went to Marion to the independent lab. On Wednesday, we got the results, which were all good. So based on that, we canceled our water advisory. And that was posted, it was emailed to the state. We did an automatic call to everyone whose number that we have. So only one of our three water sources, the North Tonne intake is still offline. That's a project that we believe the Army Corps of Engineers is going to help us with. And that's a project that we believe for now with our water plant production, that we need that North Tonne intake to bring the prison population back. And also the Sabalco facility that is on Carter Ridge, willing that to provide for them as well. And the two prisons together use about $5 million gallons a month. So they, they have, they're a big revenue producer for us, but they're a big user of our wireless well. So we need that North Tonne intake. In terms of wastewater, we are, all the lift stations are either operational or bypassed, except for two. And that's Shannon Drive and the one at Public Works. And both of those, we're still pumping and hauling. We're using one of the two quarter bore wastewater plants and that's in the Ledger area. And it is, is true to the point of being able to treat that wastewater and is doing so therefore can help departments that are in restaurants there, most of them are back in operation up to 26th quarter. So pretty much everyone can use their, their bathrooms except for a stretch of Beaver Creek where the lines already have been washed away. And again, those contractors will be back in Beaver Creek. And a lot of them have been away from their homes for weeks and so they aren't largely on the Thanksgiving. And we'll be back on Monday and working on those ones. That's what I know of where in sewer and that's all I have.
Can we get any questions?
Let me try and stand in hand. Are they full of water or are they still green?
That's a question I could imagine Travis should have given.
You don't have a storm, right?
Yeah.
The way, the way walks Lord Street, most of the charging of the Someone will slow them down if they're here.
That's, that's whatever.
I think we're releasing that for our residents by financial, I don't know. Mitchell House has been made, made aware that their water advisor is canceled and they could use the sewer. We, we hope they, they've been asking on virtually a daily basis. So I feel like they, they are incorporating those Mitchell House residents back as well.
Sure. Okay. Anything between us that we need to discuss while we're here? As far as Army Corps of Engineers, we don't have any speculative date.
I know at our FEMA meeting this morning, they brought some additional water focused FEMA experts to the meeting and they were asking a lot of questions about what timeframe did we have? And the only timeframe that I had was from probably 10 days ago, when they said that it could take up to six months. So they were going to ask the Army Corps of Engineers for a more focused, definite calendar of events in terms of getting the North Tonne intake back on the line. And, and they emphasized to us that if, you know, the Army Corps of Engineers has a lot of projects in our area right now, and that if we felt like the timeframe they came back with was too long, if it's still six weeks, we are free to engage a contractor to proceed with that. They, they were very emphatic about that. But what we need is that, that timeframe. I mean, if, if priority wise, the Army Corps of Engineers is ready to move on that project, then we need to know that.
My understanding is they got a proposal from their subcontractor on Tuesday of last week that they have funded a FEMA for their shift order, that they had planned to do a meeting here, a meeting, a site meeting and reconstruction meeting here away last week. I haven't heard since that, why didn't happen? So, so yeah, I'm happy to see FEMA take that out actually, but we're definitely against it.
I'm sure they give some of the time, but it wasn't acceptable. So what do you think that decision might, what would happen? Or what do you think that's bringing to the back of the Yeah. Necessary to operate.
Right. And those employees need to be able to, to work back in their own location. And then those visitors' families need to know, you know, that where they are, when they're going to be back. It, it makes a lot of hardships for a lot of people.
Yeah. They're, they're employees, a lot of them are traveling, A P mom in other regions of state to work. Does anybody know anybody wouldn't go up the ladder on his?
Well, I, I can ask someone, of course. I've got, I've got the guy that rents the water versus as well as but I was, I was told like Garnett said 10 days ago, that within seven to 10 days, we'll see action. When they sent us our plan, they said six months for the entire scope. They took, they're doing all the electrical, all of the pumps, anything that was hurt by the water in that pump station, they're taking care of that. But the first phase of that is the temporary pump and bypass solution capacity. So they, they told me that less than two weeks, they should be able to have water coming back to them after they start. So it's not six months to where we get water, it's six, six months to have it back to, back to flow.
Well, if I understand what FEMA's telling us, right, that all they can do is the temporary fix. If we do burn, it's got to be engineered and be so we can't do anything that is going to stay that way until we have it designed and engineered and be. And we do some form of mitigation to keep it from happening this way in if we can.
Right.
That was under the suggestions they talked about just in that meeting that they were adding an extra floor on the building and putting your electrical panels higher up, your generator up, or even maybe even all third floor. And that mitigation in itself would be funded. There's funds for that, you know? But it's got to be designed by the engineer current and get it. So those things are going to take a while, but sounds like there's not even many plans.
So the temporary fix, what the Army Corps already signed off on, are they saying that's what he takes as one?
We don't know.
We don't know. They're not really given.
So the scope that I read is the electrical panel in the wetlands, the two pumps that were drowned, getting the, getting the wetlands cleaned out. The two pumps that were drowned, getting the, getting the wet wells cleaned out. And then the temporary pump, some hard bike and fixing the bike underneath the river. Uh, my understanding is that the Army Corps of Engineers got that proof through FEMA and had been funded for that work. So.
People from FEMA today would not have that information.
I understand, I understand.
But that's separate from the temporary fix. The temporary fix is.
Is the immediate eight inch pump coming under the bridge.
Coming across the bridge, the hard bike coming across the bridge and new intake. Yeah.
An eight inch pump and bike to, to bypass the pump house. And, uh, and the damage over you want to take them, it's going to take them less than thirty days.
And so there's unclear, it's unclear as to how.
The initial, the initial, what do you ask your question? Simply ask for a temporary pump, hard bike across the bridge and new intake to water the system. When they showed them on site, they added the other things too, based on the water level that they never had inside the pump house. And said that that would fit, that would, that would fall under executive circumstances. And that they were going to ask for it to see if they could get it. So somebody did. Changed the scope in the middle of it. I think it's a nice show.
That needs to be a priority. Well, we've got to get temporary fixed on the air.
Right.
The Army Corps. I mean, if they're saying six months to a temporary fix, we could fix the whole thing in six months. It'd be current in that timeline. So that's what I'm saying. But we must, must just wait and see. I think folks and people will get us an answer.
Yeah, well, I'm going to, I'm going to grind out those sales. But it seems to me like fixing it back to the way it was, you're going to have to get authorities married with it. That one, Portugal. I don't know. I'm not, I don't know that expert.
If you go back to the permanent fix and you are asking the land is FEMA to reimburse you.
Well, the, the deal with this though.
It's a direct appropriation.
It's a, it's a direct appropriation. It's been paid for. So everything in the scope of work that they sent us, including those two pumps, uh, and, and the electrical panel has been paid for by FEMA. They got funded last week, first of the week. They've got the money in hand, so we don't even ask them for money. We're not going after anyone on those items. And we've also been assured that they will buy the lines from Underwood Associates that we've got sitting on the ground. They're going to buy parts of dying orders early to fix that. They're going to buy and make their subcontractor use those parts for a sewer not left for the bit. So if they, and we will have that at our, at our pre-start meeting. We will make sure that that isn't writing into that security.
So you're telling me if they carry through with what they've done in their scope and work, we won't even have to ask them for it?
That's exactly right.
It'll just be fixed.
He said that, he said the bike underneath the river is going to get fixed, the temporary bike across the bridge to be done.